Good morning and welcome to the 10:00 AM, October 17th recess board meeting of Soto County Board of Education. If you will, please stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under commonwealth, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart.
First of all, I apologize for my voice, the weather, feeling better now. Move to approve the agenda, Mr. Hustleton, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the agenda.
Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
I make the motion to approve the agenda.
Do I have a second? All of the members say aye. Any opposed, hearing done, that is approved. Mr. Hustleton, your superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of items I want to remind our board that our TSI, ETSI, CSI information is in your board packet. Also have early graduation requests that I would like to ask the board to please consider an executive session. Some good news this morning, we got state championship volleyball games are being played this afternoon. We've got two teams who are playing, not playing each other, so we might can win two hopefully today. We've got Lake former at high school at 6A and Lewisburg High School in 7A. Lewisburg, Lake former plays at 4 o'clock this afternoon and then Lake former plays at 4 and Lewisburg plays at 6. They both are playing at Mississippi College. So Lake former is going for a 6A state championship and Lewisburg is going for a 7A state championship. If you'll remember, both of them won it last year and so hopefully we'll have two back-to-back chances. We'll be rooting for them this afternoon. And we have got a great group of students here with us today, a group of seniors that we're very proud of, that will be recognized in just a moment. We've got our national merit semifinalists. They just found out a few weeks ago that they were national merit semifinalists. Our national merit program, most of these students, the majority of them took the PSAT test as a sophomore and then they went into the PSAT class from there and then they took the PSAT again in their junior year. Then they just got those scores back in late August, early September and found out they were national merit semifinalists. But we have got a record number, we have 30 national merit semifinalists this year and so we're very, very excited about this senior class. And so what we'll do is we'll ask the principal of each of the schools to come forward and we'll introduce them and then we'll get a group photo of each school as we do that. And so at this time I'll ask Mr. Jacob Stripling from Olive Branch High School to please come forward.
Good morning, board members and professors. Thank you for having us here today.
Before I recognize these three outstanding students, I do have my three PSAT teachers here, I would like to recognize them as well, Ms. Lisa Wayther, Ms. Kara Stephens and Ms. Michelle Drummond. First year of being one of our PSAT teachers, but Ms. Wayther, Ms. Stephens have been with us for a number of years and obviously have phenomenal results. The first representative from Olive Branch High School is Ms. Ally Dean. And Ms. Eva Mercer. I'd like to get a group photo, we have your teachers come up also. We'll move to the middle.
Next up, we have Mr. Jason Witt, principal of Center Hill High School.
Thank you, Mr. Hustleton, thank you, school board. This is always one of my favorite days of the year when we get to come in and recognize these fine young scholars. Before I do introduce them, I would like to recognize my teachers, two of which are actually unable to be here today, Judy Terry, Ms. Trudy White and my teacher that is here is Ms. Alicia Green, she is with the national merit. Our first one is Amanda Dorian. Next is Addison Hill. Next is Mia Kingard. And Noah Montgomery.
We'll get a group photo and then also, yes, I'll let your teacher. Witt. Congratulations. Next up, we have Mr. Duane Case, principal of Fernando High School.
Good morning and thank you, we're glad to be here today to recognize these students. I also have, I have two of, two of the three of my PSAT teachers here today who was testing and cannot be here, but Ms. Sullinger and Ms. Farmer are two of my PSAT teachers. Okay, our first recipient is Madison Arnold. Next up, we have Mr. Chris Parkitz, principal of Lewisburg.
Good morning, thank you for having us all here today to recognize the students for their academic achievement. My three PSAT teachers that are here with us today, Ms. Tracy Hunter, Ms. Maggie Dennis and Ms. Patricia Taber, they all grew up on that program. Our first student for national merit semifinalists is Ms. Sarah Butler. Get our students to come up along with the teachers, we'll get a group photo. Teachers, let's see. Stay down here. Next up, we have Mr. Shane Jones, principal of Soto Central High School.
Well, like everyone, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity, these are some outstanding students from all of our schools and we have 11 from the Soto Central we'd like to introduce to you at this time. Before I start, I'd like to introduce two of our teachers from the program, they do an outstanding job, definitely deserves recognition, Ms. Molly Lenninger and Mr. Brent Embry. Students that I give the privilege to introduce to you, Tristan Brewer. All right, before we get the group up along with the teachers, we'll get a photo. And parents, in just a moment, we'll have some more photo opportunities. What we would like to do is to get all the students as you're leaving today and at front entrance, we still will take a picture of the entire group together. We'll get all 30 students in one photo and then also if schools want to take more photos or parents want to take more photos, you'll have that opportunity outside in just a moment. So, once again, I want to congratulate our seniors, our national merit semifinalists, give everybody a big round of applause. Such an awesome accomplishment, we're so proud of y'all and look forward to seeing what y'all accomplish in the future. Also, I want to thank the parents and family members who are here and attend us, I want to thank you on behalf of our board members for all of your support of Soto County Schools and all that we do, we couldn't do it without y'all too. Want to congratulate the teachers and administrators who were here for all of your hard work and helping our seniors get to that point. Now, we are about to get on to the business of board meeting, y'all are welcome to stay and attend, but if you'd like to leave, now would be a good time to do that and then we can get that group photo out of the way. Thank you, everyone.
Between the students, uh, oftentimes places in the school. Uh, when you talk about the impact of bullying, you have to be concerned about both the perpetrator as well as the victim. Some of the signs that you can see would be increased, uh, risk of depression, anxiety, uh, difficult sleeping and, uh, difficulties performing in the, in the classroom. And with the perpetrator, if we don't, uh, intervene to try to help their student, uh, there's a higher risk of academic problems. And, uh, that student could become violent later on in life. So hopefully you deal with this now versus having to deal with it, uh, later. Plan activities for all schools, whether it was elementary, middle or high during the month of October, if you walk into any of those buildings, uh, you see videos, music, banners, posters, uh, contracts and pledges, a lot of social media lists, uh, guest speakers. And our elementary schools and middle schools, they tie in a red ribbon weekend bullying convention. It kind of ties it together because, uh, a lot of good programs and, uh, activities you can, you can find related to both. Uh, bullying prevention awareness days, uh, the world bullying prevention day was on October the seventh, but when we were out, some of the schools kind of selected the day, uh, the day in October that they wanted to do the, uh, world bullying prevention. And for the most part, yesterday was unit today and a lot of our schools participated in that as well. Uh, Lewisburg intermediate, some of the activities that they participated in, of course, the world bullying prevention day and the unit today, they had students shout outs where students could write notes and, uh, place them in a box and then, uh, the principals would read them over the intercom. As well as students were allowed to read over the intercom as well. And some of the pictures you can see, uh, the student at, at the top middle, he's actually doing one of the announcements. The young lady under, under him is, uh, dropping off her shout out in the drop off. Lake Cameron Elementary, the counselor, assistant principal attended a bullying one-on-one presentation. They had a daily, uh, video bullying prevention and they used the character educations with the word of the month to tell the audience. Bottom right-hand corner, the counselors are sitting with the group students going over that bullying presentation every time. And of course, all of the students participated in the world bullying prevention day by way of being. Over Park Elementary, they had a thing to celebrate making healthy choices and bringing awareness to, uh, the importance of kindness, friendship and anti-bullying. And, uh, of course, just they participated in that. And looking at this slide, the first thing that came to my mind was I wonder how many of the students actually know who Fred Best is? And here we look at Fernando Hills Elementary, they had second grade classes pairing up the third grade classes and they, uh, made some kindness bookmarks and also they read book, uh, bucket builders. Students were allowed to be the highest class or you see several pictures there. And as well as Julie today and the activity, uh, the bookmark activity in the left-hand corner. And up right, if students participated in. Uh, once again, you had, uh, the unit today, council lady, lancers and be a, a, uh, butt and not a bully. That was a big thing amongst several other elementary stu-, uh, schools. Uh, the Southern Central Primary, they had an anti-bullying dance and they discussed the difference between telling and tattling. And in the telling piece of it, that's when they encourage the students and gave them instructions on how to deal with bullying and how to discuss it with, with the teachers. Uh, they use rhythms, uh, and, and good words to describe friends during, uh, during singing lessons. And of course, you'll see the counselors are often involved and, and they lead the way when it comes down to, uh, bullying prevention and, and getting the kids together, trying to come up with solutions. Couldn't do it without the counselors and we work hand-in-hand, uh, with them and I'm appreciative that to one of Williams and I, we have such a great relationship, uh, when it comes to trying to help is incorporate some of these things into the classroom. Uh, there's the team up against bullying. Students, as I said, bingo boards, uh, bulletin boards and other things will be found throughout the buildings. Olive Branch Intermediate, they had morning announcements from the school counselors once again, and they focused on bullying awareness and prevention with the word of the month self-control. The, uh, kindness bingo board there, each, each, uh, classroom had, had this up and if a student was caught doing one of those things, uh, on the bingo board, then they would get keys to coins and at the end of the month, that'd be the time to, uh, get some prizes and gifts. So that was, uh, I think that was pretty good and the kids are enjoying it. Center Hill Middle School had a PowerPoint activity, anti-bullying contracts and sign pledges, uh, dress up days and they participated in red ribbon week activities. Uh, Southern Central Middle, uh, they had a kindness challenge once again and when students are caught doing something, uh, productive, they would get, uh, their names placed in a basket and the principal would select some of those names and those are your recipients for the first week. Uh, Clay Company High School signed a, uh, stop bullying pledge poster and these are some of the staff members from Center Hill participating yesterday in our, uh, unit today. Last but not least tips that we want all the parents, oh, we suggest that you talk about bullying with your students and role-playing because you never know which, uh, role that your student or friend could be found in, could be the victim, hopefully it wouldn't be the perpetrator or, or the vice staff and what, what should the vice staff do in a situation like that? So it's, it's good to role-play. Also to model kindness, it's kind of hard to expect our kids to do better and be better if we ran and, and raving over it and everything. So you want to model kindness in front of your students. Uh, monitor social media, this is a big one. And this is the most difficult because we can't take, uh, cell phones away from the kids, so we just have to tell them to deal with it, which we probably should have, but a lot of our problems occur on cell phones and social media. Uh, we want to encourage parents to know the sign of bullying and, and encourage reporting if a kid, some kids will see things happen and they don't necessarily know how to process it or what to do with it. So we want to encourage our students to, uh, report it when we see it. And the last thing we want to do is empower our students to be, uh, confident and there to see regardless of what's going on around them. So this is the end of my presentation. I thank y'all for your time and, uh, y'all have any questions?
Great presentation. Obviously, this is a topic that is, uh, very important and one that, uh, is very important to address any type of bullying concerns that are out there, but at the same time, uh, seeing all these proactive measures, uh, and, and programs going on on campus to encourage positive behavior instead of negative behavior. But this family does a great job of, uh, of working with the schools on this and I commend you for all of your hard work. At this time, I'd like to ask our director of workforce development, Beth Turner, to come forward for a presentation. She's got so much information to cover that I've got her booked for three more meetings this year, and so this will be the first one of the three.
Good morning and thank you for the opportunity to share all of the great things that we have going on in our schools, specifically with our high schools. And today I wanted to, um, introduce you all and expose you to what our career coaches are doing in our high schools and kind of give you an overview of all of the wonderful events that have been going on this faring school year. So as you know, with us, uh, we, um, get really well into our goal one with focus on student learning and also with goal five, with building those strong community partnerships. That's so important to the work that's being done in our high schools to make sure that our students have that career development opportunity. And so what is a career coach and what do they do? Uh, so I wanted to start out today and just want to thank you for agreeing to the partnership with the Three Rivers Planning and Development because without that partnership, we wouldn't be able to do the thing, the things that we're doing in our high schools. And that allows us to have those career coaches within, um, each of our schools. And so we started out the school year this year with eight career coaches. We had one in each of our high schools and through some need, uh, assessments and really review of the efforts that were being done, Three Rivers was able to provide three additional career coaches. And so they started about the middle of September within our schools. And so our career coaches are working within our school to implement the epic plan. And so what they're doing is that they are exposing the students, preparing them, allowing students to investigate and then connecting with different careers within our areas. And so I've invited the career coaches to be here this morning because I would like for you to be able to put a face with a name and what school they are in. So I would like to introduce and recognize our career coaches to you this morning. First off, we have Marina Hopper at Center Hill High School. We have Angela Fletcher and our new career coach, Kayla Cooley at DeSoto Central High School. Holly Wheeler is at Hernando High School. Pat Brady is also a new career coach and Robin Hennessy at Horn Lake High School. Hannah Blackley is at Lake Cormorant High. Laurie Waring at Lewisburg High. Lauren Sparringberger, who is now Miss Verse at Olive Branch High School. And Michelle Iverson and our new career coach, Devonte Malone at South Haven High School. So it has been, it has been fast-paced and boots on the ground since the beginning of the school year. And so one of the important things that the career coaches do within the schools is making those school connections, whether that is being there from the start of school with the welcome back events to parent engagement nights, to even participating in the homecoming parade and activities. It's so important for our career coaches to be able to establish those relationships with the student and the staff and the parents within their high schools. They're able to participate in individual student planning meetings with our students that allows them in those one-on-one meetings to find out the student interests, help with career interest inventory and kind of get a sense of what the students want to do after high school or find out if they do have a plan already. This is especially important for our December grads, so our career coaches have been focusing on our December grads at the beginning of the school year, just to make sure that they do have a plan for when they graduate early in December. So they also expose the students to college, whether that is taking large groups on field trips to college, uh, and exploring the different areas that are available, uh, learning about the opportunities that are available at college themselves through tours or bringing those colleges within, uh, the high schools, whether that is doing, um, a setup in the commons area, having the admissions department, um, speak to the different, uh, college and career classes or senior classes with that, helping students to apply for the college that they're interested in. And then of course, the students are coming back and letting them know when they were accepted. So also they're exposing to careers. Our, our career coaches are, uh, in a situation where they're able to go on different tours and experience what is available within our community and then they're able to bring that back into the schools. So whether that is introducing the students to different military areas, uh, having guest speakers within the college and career classes or other, um, different areas, even our chemistry class, that just happened this week, uh, where one of our career coaches was able to connect a, a chemistry class with a specific career and guest speaker for them. So it's not just CCR classes that our career coaches are working in, they're also working with those specific subject areas to introduce the students to careers that are related to that class that they're in. So they're really able to bring that real-world connection into our academic classes as well. So they also are hosting lunch and learns and breakfast with businesses within our schools. So oftentimes this could be to where a business will come in either in the morning or at lunch and our career coaches are able to identify a set number of students that have expressed interest and invite them in. Or they're able to take a small group out to a company and the company will provide lunch for them and discuss what those career opportunities are. Of course, they take our students on student industry tours to where they're able to go in and tour as well. They're helping to prepare our students through classroom activities, whether that is having a hands-on guest speaker come in and perform some kind of activities with the students or our career coaches are actually going in and teaching and doing classroom activities all the way from middle school up into high school. They're preparing our students through mock interviews. So this is where they're demonstrating, uh, the proper way to conduct an interview, how to answer the questions, and then they're setting up times that our industry is coming in and working with the students in a mock interview type setting. Sometimes that's in a classroom setting and then other times that's in a large group, uh, as you can see in the pictures. We also have ready-for-work events that go on in our high schools. Our most recent one was at Center Hill High School this year. And so those, um, events within the school allows different industry and businesses to come in and do everything from teaching the students how to tie a tie, what proper dress looks like, how to fill out an application, reviewing their resume, and again, bringing that mock interview into that and providing feedback to the students on those events. We have our job shadow experiences that are going on, just allows those students to get in, whether that's a designated time for several hours that they're out, doing it all day within the community. So they're able to express to the career coach, uh, an area of interest that they might want to learn more about and our career coaches are able to set those up and allow our students to go out and investigate and do a job shadow experience. And it's not just a one-time thing. If a student comes back and says, that's really not what I thought that was going to be, I think I might be interested in something else. Then they also help to work to find those connections for those students as well. And then through, um, connecting with our businesses, our career coaches are able to offer a paid internship and through the paid internship, the students have an opportunity to, uh, work 100 hours and receive payment for that, um, through, um, funds that are available through Three Rivers Planning and Development. Uh, so we have a Baptist hospital internship that is going on right now. Uh, Baptist has worked with our career coaches to develop several different cohorts throughout the school year. And so our career coaches are able to find those students within the school and plug them into those cohorts. So our students are at, um, lots of different areas to where they are receiving a paid internship to complete those hours and learn more about that, uh, career field. So again, thank you so much. We have so much that's going on in the schools. That's just a brief overview. Uh, all of our schools, while they are unique and different and have different needs, our career coaches are there to help connect those students, uh, to all of the different career pathways that are available within our community and within our area. And so I just want to thank you again for that partnership, for allowing our career coaches to be part of the schools and to be able to provide those experiences for our students. We would not be able to offer the opportunities without that partnership for them. So thank you so much for your support of all we're doing for career development within the schools.
Thank you. Thank our career coaches who are, who are here today and, uh, y'all are doing an excellent job in the schools and, and I want to thank our board, uh, for allowing us to have Ms. Turner in that role as director of workforce development. I believe it's really enhanced the career coach's role too, uh, to where we have those coordinated efforts on campus and, uh, love, uh, Ms. Turner's enthusiasm and passion for, uh, workforce development and, and I want to thank the board again because this is going to pay dividends for our students, not only now, but on down the road for them in their profession. So great job by, by everyone involved. Thank y'all. And that concludes my superintendent's report.
All right. Great. Thank you, Mr. Austin. Mr. Keith, turn it forward. Do you need that to hear it?
Sir.
Perfect. Uh, approval of minutes from the October 3rd, 2024 board meeting. I do not have a motion to approve those minutes.
I make that motion?
Do I have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. Before we, uh, proceed to approve the consent agenda, uh, on behalf of the board, uh, I'd like to express my gratitude to, to this elder, our entire administrative staff, uh, providing the board with sufficient time to review all these items, uh, ask questions, ask us pertinent questions, uh, get the answers back and that ensures that we're able to make the most well-impeded decisions that we can. With that being said, uh, moving to approve the consent agenda, items A through T to T, Mr. Austin, do you have a recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the consent agenda.
Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Unitary Business, Mr. Williams. Architectural Services for Allen and Hostel P L L C Bus Lane Repaving Met with the Spur Primary School.
Yes, sir. Receiving permission from the board to enter into contractual agreement with Allen and Hostel for the Lewisburg Primary School Bus Lane Repaving Project.
Mr. Usleton, your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the entry into contractual agreement with Allen Hostel for the Architectural Services for the Bus Lane Repaving, Repaving Project at Lewisburg Primary School.
Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
Make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Mr. Williams, permission to advertise for bids for the Bus Lane Repaving at Lewisburg Primary School.
Yes, sir. Requesting permission from the board to advertise for bids on the Lewisburg Primary School Bus Lane Repaving Project.
Mr. Usleton, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the advertising for bids for the Bus Lane Repaving Project at Lewisburg Primary School.
Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
You got, you got, Mr. Riley. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Mr. Williams, uh, Architectural Services, Allen and Hostel P L L C HVAC Renovations at Olive Branch Middle School.
Yes, sir. Requesting permission from the board to enter into contractual agreement with Allen and Hostel for the Olive Branch Middle School HVAC Renovation Project.
Mr. Usleton, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve entry into contractual agreement with Allen Hostel for the Architectural Services for the HVAC renovations at Olive Branch Middle School.
Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Mr. Williams, permission to advertise bids for the HVAC renovations at the Olive Branch Middle School.
Yes, sir. Requesting permission from the board to advertise for bids on the Olive Branch Middle School HVAC Renovation Project.
Mr. Usleton, your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the advertising for bids for the HVAC renovations at Olive Branch.
Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, hearing second, do I, um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Mr. Williams, Architectural Services of Allen Hostel P L L C for the Toilet Room Renovations at South Haven Middle School.
Yes, sir. Requesting permission from the board to enter into contractual agreement with Allen and Hostel for the South Haven Middle School Toilet Room Renovation, um, Project.
Uh, Mr. Usleton, your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve entering into contractual agreement with Allen Hostel for the Architectural Services for the renovations at South Haven Middle School.
Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Mr. Williams, permission to advertise for bids for the Toilet Room Renovation at South Haven Middle School.
Yes, sir. Requesting permission from the board to advertise for bids on the South Haven Middle School Renovations.
Mr. Usleton, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve advertising for bids for the renovations at South Haven Middle School.
Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
Make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Mr. Williams, Architectural Services, Allen and Hostel, P L L C Refloring Project at the South Haven Middle School.
Yes, sir. Seeking permission from the board to enter into contractual agreement with Allen and Hostel for the South Haven Middle School Refloring Project.
Mr. Usleton, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve entry into contractual agreement with Allen Hostel for the Refloring Project at South Haven Middle School.
Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Mr. Williams, permission to advertise for bids for the Refloring Project at South Haven Middle School.
Yes, sir. Requesting permission from the board to advertise for bids on the South Haven Middle School Refloring Project.
Mr. Usleton, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve advertising for bids for the Refloring Project at South Haven Middle School.
Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Mr. Williams, do you want to purchase a vehicle?
He threw me out with that. Yes, sir. Please, 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 please request permission to purchase a new fleet vehicle. Chuck that into your.
Uh, Mr. Usleton, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the request purchase of vehicle.
Uh, hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Making sure it is. Hadley, good morning to you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Statement of revenues and expenditures for 20 August 2024.
And these are still tentative figures, uh, when you receive it next month, we have finally closed down the year, so you will have real, uh, real amount. So revenue collections through August for the general funds are 44,147,388, which is actually 4% higher than FY '24 revenues at 32,464,380. The increase is due to the increased evaluation of ADLOR and the increased MSFL, the new funding formula. Revenues for all funds are 55,550,243, which is up 1% over last year at 54,943,030, which is more in line now that the ESSR funds are depleting. Uh, our general fund expenditures through August for 35,116,095, which is 6% over FY ' '24 expenditures at 33,169,41. It's really only a difference of 2.1 million. Expenditures for all funds are 44,766,020. The increase in expenditures is in line with the budget projections.
Mr. Usleton, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the state revenue expenditures for August 2024.
Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. This Hadley, combined balance sheet, August 2024.
The fund balance for all general funds is 192,698,850, which is up 10% over FY '24, which was 174,687,456. The fund balance will begin to move closer to the FY '24 figures with majority of the ESSR funds being spent and those expenditures are being moved to district maintenance.
Mr. Usleton, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the combined balance sheet for August 2024.
Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
Make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. This Hadley, statement of cash flow for August 2024.
The August cash balance for district maintenance is 173,574,895, which is 71% of the cash balance for all funds standing at 245,256,560. The amount invested with Smith Shellnut and Regions Bank at the end of August was 51,701,53, uh, adjusted at fair market value. What we, we will reverse the adjustment next month, month, which will bring it down to the September 2024.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Usleton, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the statement of cash flow for August 2024.
Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Mr. Alexander, personnel.
Yes, sir. Personnel packet, morning, it's pages 1 through 4 recommendations, pages five and six are personal changes. Page seven is provisional memo for those that are waiting on licensure, receiving provisional pay. Page eight is memo from Michigan's Reg of Athletics on names who will volunteer as prior professionals, assist with coaching, have a, uh, lady that will be helping with Merrill Soper at Hernando High School. Page nine is the flow chart, the board of education. Page 10 is flow chart for superintendent's office. Page 11 is a flow chart for human resources department. Pages 12 through 14 is the data customer support job description. Pages 15 through 17 is a data of customer support, data processing job description. Page 18 is the data customer support of M L A and workers compensation job description. Page 21 is a flow chart for accreditation and advanced academics. Page 22 is a flow chart for workforce development. Page 23 is a flow chart for gifted education. Page 24 is a flow chart for student records and graduate services. I need to stop that and have that approved.
Yes, sir. Mr. Usleton, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve personnel as presented.
Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Mr. Alexander.
Page 25 is a memo, uh, for an employee who is waiting on licensure, maybe paying provisional pay for that.
Mr. Usleton, what is your recommendation? Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve personnel as present. Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Mr. Finley, do we have any student discipline matters?
Yes, from Hill Street, yes, the matter, yes, executive session.
Mr. Coler, do we have any residency matters?
Yes, sir. We have, I think, executive session.
I need a motion for consideration of closed session to determine whether the board should carry into executive session for the following matters.